I forgot about it, totally. I am. I'm calling to order the Palm Springs Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, June 10th. And can I have a roll call, please?
There I go again. Chair Wermuth, Kathy.
Yes?
Vice Chair Maruzzi.
Oh, yeah, here.
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Present.
Commissioner Irvin, is he there? Yes. No, he's not here. Commissioner Hirschbein.
Present.
Commissioner Lewin.
President.
And Commissioner Song.
Present.
Yes.
Can I have a report on the posting of the agenda, please?
Madam Chair, the agenda was posted on Thursday, June 4th. This meeting has been noticed and posted in accordance with state law.
At this point, the Planning Commission will discuss the order of the agenda, and you may amend it. Are there any amendments to the order of the agenda? Seeing none, this is a time for public comments. Before I talk about public comments, Flynn, do we have any members of the public who've called in?
Madam Chair, we don't have anyone who has requested to speak under this portion of the agenda.
Thank you. The public comment portion of the agenda is closed. What's before us is the consent calendar. It is the approval of the minutes of May 13th, 2020. Can I get a motion, please?
Motion to approve. Second?
All in favor. At this point, Commissioner Irvin has joined us. Flynn, do you need to call the roll?
Yes, we'll have Ms. Brueggemann's call the roll for the vote.
Okay, the vote for the minutes?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm doing this after a long time. Chair Wermuth.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein. Commissioner.
Yes.
Yes. Donenfeld, Commissioner Song.
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Maruzzi, Vice Chair, I'm sorry, and Charlie Irvin.
All in favor? Approved. Yes, okay.
Okay, at this point, we have public hearings. Both items before us are public hearings. The first is 2A Verizon Wireless on behalf of Douglas Jones and Terrence Jones for an amendment to a conditional use permit for an existing telecommunications facility to modify the approved design of a fan palm to a date palm design for the property located at 2101 Sahara Road. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and Planning Commissioners, the application before you, as you stated, is an amendment to an approved conditional use permit. And we'll pull up the slides here in just a moment. So we're having a little technical difficulty with the remote, but as a way of background, this application was approved back in 2014. This is the third facility of the three that were approved at this location. The first one was approved in 2004, and it was approved as a monopole designed as a fan palm. Live palms were also planted at that time. In 2009, a second conditional use permit was approved to construct a monopole at this location, also as a fan palm design. Additional landscaping and a low garden wall was installed on the site as a part of the 2009 approval. And then finally, in 2014, the subject conditional use permit was approved as a fan palm design as well. However, a date palm design was the facility that was, in fact, constructed. So to give you an idea of what the site looks like, this is an aerial view of the property and the surrounding properties around the facility. To the north is residential, to the south is Vista Chino Hybrid 111, and then vacant properties are also around the site. The facility in question is the one that you do see here circled in red. It does appear as a date palm design. The other two facilities on the bottom, or below it on the bottom of the screen, and to the right are fan palm design monopoles. So this is an elevation of the property showing some of the existing live palm trees that are Mexican fan palm species, as well as the two existing facilities designed as fan palm structures, and then, of course, the date palm that is existing and the facility in question today. Some existing site photographs of the property. This is a view looking south from a northerly vantage point. So this would be from Sahara Road looking towards the mountains or Vista Chino. Another. Buildings are on the left side of the screen, and then the existing date palm design facility is here pointed out. Another view here is from the southeast vantage point looking northwest. So this would probably be within the parking lot that you saw to the south of the site, showing the existing palm, date palm facility in question, as well as the existing fan palm facility to the left of it. Another view from the west looking towards the east. So you can see the live trees that were planted and the low wall that was installed back in 2014 on the bottom of the picture, as well as the existing live palms and the wireless facility. And then this is the view from the northwest looking southeast. You can see all three of the facilities in this picture, the existing live plant materials, and get a kind of a good overall sense of the three communication facilities. So staff reviewed the findings that are required for approving a CUP or a CUP amendment. We were able to provide support, or facts, in support of findings one through four. However, when reviewing finding number five, as it relates to protecting the public health, safety, and general welfare and conditions that are imposed for these types of facilities, we felt that the design deviation from the existing conditions on-site with respect to the existing live palm trees, as well as the other wireless communication facilities, the amendment would not be, we would not be able to support the amendment based on inability to make finding number five. So that's all, as you have seen in the report, provided for the project. And that really concludes my presentation. This is a public hearing. Before we move to the public comment and questions, I did want to provide an additional photo that the applicant requested. I showed the commission. So they asked if you see the other facility that is there on-site and the issues that go along with having the fan palm design. So they've given us this photo to provide to you, and I believe they will be providing testimony today when they speak about the problems that they have with the fan palm design facilities and maintenance related to that. So I will also note that this specific facility that you see here in the photo at the property is currently, or has been notified, that they are lacking the fan palm fronds that are necessary for the permit. And that was a recent event that happened last month when we were called out for an inspection to approve modifications to the antennas at this facility. So there is an outstanding permit that has not been finalized because of this issue, but I did want to bring that attention to you, as the applicant has requested that this facility be specifically shown to you. As I said, they would be providing testimony on the project. So with that, Madam Chair, I'm happy to turn it back to you and answer any questions the commission might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions for staff? Commissioner Hirschbein?
So David, are you saying that photograph you just sent us is not in compliance, and you're seeking them to modify that installation?
We've already notified them that we will not finalize that permit until they add the palm fronds to the facility.
Could you put the photo back up? So, in other words, this isn't finished yet, and for what you've approved, this needs to add fronds to it. Is that what the issue is?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Are there other questions for staff? Commissioner Maruzzi.
On view number three, are the fronds of the date palm really that blue, bluish, in comparison to the fan palm? It looks blue. Maybe this is out of the photos. View three, looking north from Vista Chino. It's oddly blue.
Yeah, I think that the color of the palm that was painted for this facility does have more of a blue tint than the other more greenish tints that you see on the other facilities.
A very bluish tint. I think it's blue. Anyway, thank you.
Are there other questions? I have one. What is our purview on this? And that may be a question for Director Fag.
Your purview today is you're reviewing an amendment to the permit that has been approved. So you're specifically looking at the design of the facility as it relates to the five findings for CUPs. And does this design still meet the criteria required under the CUP ordinance? So, again, as we stated, we felt that finding number five, as it relates to screening of these types of facilities, it's not being met with the proposed amendment.
And then the other question is, do you have any information that there's a difference in the fan, with the fan palms and the date palms in terms of maintenance? Do staff hold a view that that's different? Or is that even in our purview?
It's definitely something that, in terms of our observation, of these types of facilities, fan palms have become more of a problem in terms of maintenance, especially in the high wind areas, versus a date palm design. wind areas, versus a date palm design. So, there are, there is some merit to that being an issue as a continual maintenance problem. But in specific technicalities, I couldn't answer those.
Thank you. Commissioner Donenfeld.
David, in the staff report, I believe, or it's something where the applicant was making the allegation that using the fan palm approach affected transmission capabilities as opposed to the date palm because of the fronds perhaps getting in the way of transmission. Is there anything like that being alleged? And of course, we can ask the applicant as well.
Yes, they have made that statement.
Because that would go to item number five in the conditions.
Yeah, they've made that statement as a part of their justification letter for this amendment. I would only say that it, we have seen other facilities that have been built successfully with this type of design. It just comes down to the, I think, the extent of the number of palm fronds that are actually installed, that extend beyond the antennas themselves, is when it becomes, I think, more problematic for the carrier. But we have seen other facilities designed successfully that are a fan palm design.
Thank you.
If there are no more questions, we'll open the public hearing. The applicant has five minutes. Is the applicant on the line?
We're calling them now.
Thank you.
This is Ben.
Yes, I was trying to reach Ben Haxted. This is John Meyer calling from the city. Hi, Mr. Haxted. I'm calling on, at the Planning Commission meeting live here, and you'll have five minutes to do a small presentation on your item 2A regarding the communications facility, and we'll start that comment period now.
Oh, are you guys already too there? I was trying to follow along live, and they were still talking about the library on my feed.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yes, we are currently live right now on the item.
Okay. Trying to get mine up to speed here. Okay. Uh, thank you. I wasn't able to hear staff's comments. I apologize. My YouTube seems to be lagging behind. I did read staff's report. I do understand that items one through four, they are recommending approval. As far as number five, which is stated that the actual faux tree needed to be a Mexican fan palm tree, and currently, it was designed as a date palm tree. I know that in looking at some of the archives, that's from 2014, it appears that the proposed, was proposed as a date palm tree throughout most of the planning and review, and then it appears that at Planning Commission, they asked for possibly a Mexican palm and palm tree, and that was added to the condition. It appears that the vendor possibly handling that may not have conveyed that to Verizon, and Verizon went ahead and built the date palm tree as they had proposed. They do propose the date palms in lieu of Mexican fan palms, as the Mexican fan palms have been shown to have many issues and many problems with the actual fronds flying off. We, if you look at one of the existing facilities, I believe it is the T-Mobile facility, that is currently there, last time we were out there, there was about seven fronds left on the tree, and all the antennas were pretty much exposed. There were some of the fronds scattered throughout the property, and the Verizon date palm had all of its fronds on there. Now, that being said, the date palm's fronds could use some color and some recoating or some re-froning, and Verizon has already admitted, when they went in to try to have this facility modified, that they were willing to go ahead and do that. And that was when they became aware that the facility needed to be approved as a date palm or be turned into a Mexican fan palm, and that is what brought us here today. Once again, sorry, I did come on. My name is Ben Haxted. I'm with Sequoia Employment Services and representing Verizon Wireless on this project. And if you guys have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer those now.
Thank you. Flynn, are there any members of the public who wish to comment?
There are no other speakers for public comment.
You would normally have three minutes for rebuttal. Do you wish to take your three minutes? Hearing no answer. Do members of the commission have questions for the applicant? There seeing no one who's, oh, Commissioner Song?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant, and the question is about the last image that David Newell has put on the screen for us, in which the palm is incomplete because there are some fans missing. What was going to be the next step in order to bring that monopalm to completion?
I, I had a little trouble hearing that, but it sounds like you, there was a picture shown. Sorry that I didn't see it when I was, now my YouTube is up to date, and I can see it. I believe that was a picture we added to show that the, one of the other facilities had a bunch of missing palm fronds. The current facility that Verizon has there is not missing any fronds, but they were looking, once they can get the date palm approved, they were looking to modify the antennas. They're not adding any or anything. They want to go to a different antenna amount and add some, you know, units to it. And the, and when they went there to discuss that with the planning department, the planning department informed them that it was supposed to be a Mexican palm, and that even if they were going to do what they were going to do, the city would like them to replace or refinish the existing fronds that are on the tower, if that answers your question, I think. I'm sorry, it was hard to hear.
I, I just need a clarification. In 2004, in 2004, you have installed a Verizon monopalm antenna tower with the aesthetics of a Mexican palm tree. Is that correct?
I, I'm sorry, over the phone, it's hard to hear. I, it would probably be easier to hear on the screen, but I, I can't quite understand what you're saying, so I would be negligent to respond. I really can't understand.
Madam Chair, maybe I can respond. So, the facilities that were built in 2004 were by, were done by other carriers, so this applicant wouldn't have been involved with those previous CUPs. He is specifically speaking on the date palm facility that is there now, as this is one of the carriers that has a ground lease with the property owner. And so, the property owner basically is leasing out portions of their property to these facilities, so there really aren't any involvement between them.
Okay, thank you. That, that's it.
Commissioner Donenfeld.
Operationally speaking, is there any difference between utilizing a fan or a date palm configuration?
Uh, yes, that is a good question, and that was represented in our, our, our project description and our justification to the city. The problem with the fan palms and, and the amount that you need to actually screen the antennas, and the amount that they actually wave in the wind and move, does cause quite an issue with the RF signal. And that is one of the other reasons that Verizon specifically much prefers to use the date palm configuration.
Currently, where you're doing palms in other jurisdictions, are you relying solely on the date as opposed to the fan palm? Are you doing both?
Are you, did you hear the question, Mr. Haxted? Mr. Haxted?
Yes. Did you, sorry, can somebody repeat that? It was hard to hear.
Yes. Currently, in installing fan palms in other areas in the country, are you using exclusively date or using both types of palm configurations?
Good question. I can, I can say specifically, dealing in Southern California and in Northern California for Verizon, that this is one of the things that is specifically being relayed to us in the very beginning of site development, that, that please convey to the jurisdictions legislating the approval on this, that it is very much preferred that we use a date palm for this reason, this reason, and this reason. So, yes, I can definitely say that. Around the country, I can't necessarily say, because I don't work on projects all throughout the country, but certainly in Southern California and Northern California, we've been asked to make sure that we, we try to explain to them kind of the necess, the necessary necessity of having a date palm.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Commissioner Song?
Um, I, compared to the Mexican palm and the date palm, the fans are still secure to the monopole, and the fans are still moving in air regardless if it is a Mexican or a date palm. So, how is it that on the date palm, the fans that are attached do not create any nuisance to the wavelength of communication?
That the plans don't refer to, to the wavelength of the communication? Is that, is that what I heard?
Uh, maybe somebody can help repeat my question.
Staff, can you repeat the question?
Mr. Haxted, so, the way I understood it is, she's asking what the difference is between the Mexican palm versus the date palm, and how the current plans can potentially be a nuisance. Did I understand that question correctly?
Okay, I understand. So, I, I think what, so just to be clear, the current fronds on the tree are date palm. Verizon, and that's what, Verizon constructed a date palm, and were out of compliance, because after further review, when they went in for an approval of a second project, it was found that they were out of compliance. They were supposed to do a Mexican frond palm, which was decided, it, it, it seems during a Planning Commission meeting. They most likely went ahead with the date palm because the plans that appeared to have been approved previous to the Planning Commission, or the ones that they were taking there, the whole time was a date palm. And that is what Verizon pushes for and always says we need to have, because the Mexican fan palm has a lot of issues, especially when it comes to wear and tear, and when it comes to RF signals. So, currently, what is there is a Mexican palm, and Verizon doesn't have any issues with that. They, they prefer that, and that's why they're asking approval for it. The color of the frond is a bit faded, and the city and city planning and staff recommended that they be replaced with new palms. If this tree does get approved, and if Verizon's going to move forward with doing any kind of updates to the facility, they would need to refron the tree. I believe that answers the question. If it doesn't, please let me know.
Okay, but doesn't, doesn't the frond still oscillate with the Mexican, with, with the date palm tree? Doesn't the frond still oscillate with the wind?
It, it does. They're, they are, one of the funny things about these, these designs and these different trees is that they generally are made by different manufacturers, and most of the manufacturers, the different camouflage manufacturers, they have a patent on a certain type. So, the date palm tree, yes, it'll, it'll move in the wind a bit, but if you, if you saw the difference in the wind, it's substantially different. The Mexican palm itself, just to be able to look like a Mexican fan palm, is much wider and broader across and can just catch more wind, and it's more flexible because it has to have that kind of more bent look, whereas the date palm is kind of flared more straight out, if you know what I mean. So, yes, they both do move, and not to say that every tree is, you know, impenetrable and can't be, you know, affected by the wind. It's just that the Mexican palms have created issues where they fly off, and Verizon even views that as a bit of a safety issue.
Okay, thank you.
Did you take this, seeing no other questions? Did you bring this application before the city in 2014, yourself?
Uh, no. My, my company, myself and Sequoia Employment Services, was not the vendor that worked on the original approval.
When, and wouldn't Verizon have accepted, and I believe they did accept the date palm because there were two other date palms in the area? I mean, they did, the, Mexican palms, right. And isn't that a circumstance that Verizon might send itself in at other times?
I, I would, I cannot speak specifically, because I haven't talked to somebody and why they came to that conclusion. I would, I would, it seemed that it would be more likely that they were not made aware of the change, and thus, they went ahead with their original build, and that they later found out, if, if I were the person that worked on that project, and this was one of the conditions, that would be spoken about at the hearing, or at least prior to it, if we knew that was a condition, and we would only move forward to getting approval on that if I had Verizon's approval of that. But it's a good point. I'm not 100% sure that somebody signed off on it, but seeing as how they went with the date palm, I would imagine that there was definitely some communication errors.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? Thank you very much. This is before the commission. Are there comments or motions? Commissioner Irvin, did you have your hand up?
No, I was just moving some papers around.
Okay. Commissioner Song?
Uh, okay, so, as far as the finding number five, because there's a total of three monoparms in the vicinity, and it's one of the areas that we would like, the neighborhood is filling in with new homes, and we are, as a community, we, we want to improve every time we have new construction. The original two other monoparms are in very bad shape aesthetically. And although this one looks like a brand-new, full, composed monopalm, it, it looks odd. It, it looks like it does not belong. It doesn't gel with the rest of the natural and faux It doesn't, um, gel with the rest of the natural and full composition. So my way of looking at this is perhaps, um, not installing it as back to a Mexican palm, but let it just be a antenna, uh, Verizon tower, um, without trying to screen it, um, and let it be what it really is. That would be my, uh, approach.
Commissioner Hirschfeld?
Microphone, Michael.
Commissioner Hirschfeld, you're on. I don't believe you're muted.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I agree with Commissioner Song. I, I think these just look silly. That's my opinion.
Anyone else? Comments? No other comments? Oh, Commissioner, Commissioner Lewin.
Thank, thank you, Madam Chair. It, it seems to me that for many years, various planning commissions have attempted to, you know, build a Mexican fan palm grove to hide these towers. And the operator error that installed the wrong tower, I don't think should undo the work that goes back for more than 10 years. So my instinct is to, to uphold the prior planning commission's activities and the staff report and say that, that Verizon needs to install the, the tower that was approved. Um, I'm certainly open to other ideas, but this seems like operator error that should be corrected.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
I agree with Commissioner Lewin. Uh, none of them look good, let's face it. These are not beautiful things to behold, but I think consistency, at least if you were being consistent with respect to what we're trying to achieve so that it's all the same ugliness, it's not a variety of ugliness. And so I would agree that we should probably agree. I would, I would agree with staff report.
Are there any other comments? There, seeing none, I will add my own, which is that I sat on that planning commission. I do not recall Verizon coming in and asking for a fan, a fan palm. Um, I'm sure we approved what was there based on what was also there, and I believe the council at that time wanted, um, they wanted adornment on the palms and, and voted us down a few times when we proposed mono palms. Um, I think we should just, it's an operator error. I think they need to fix it, uh, and I agree with the staff report. I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the staff report with the findings and we can see where we go. Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, comments? Can you call the roll?
Here we go again. Commissioner Donenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschfeld?
No.
Commissioner Lewin?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I.
It's a yes in favor of the motion? No problem.
Commissioner Song?
No.
Vice Chair Marudse?
Yes.
And Chair Werbung?
Yes.
Okay, it is.
The motion passed.
Correct.
Moving right along on our very long agenda. The next item is a, also a public hearing, although the applicant is the city, so we won't have testimony from the city. City of Palm Springs to amend the Palm Springs zoning code to establish a food desert overlay zone. The purpose of the overlay zone is to provide incentives for the development of grocery stores in underserved areas so as to increase access to healthy and affordable food. Staff report, please.
Madam Chair and members of the commission, the item that you have before you is request for approval of a draft ordinance to establish a food desert overlay. As we discussed in our meeting last month, there are portions of the city that qualify as a food desert as defined by the United States Department of Agriculture, primarily using three criteria, that being that the area is more than a mile from an existing grocery store, the median household income is at or below the city median income level, and that there's a level of poverty within the area of greater than 20%. What we're proposing to do is to establish a food desert overlay using those criteria and to have the planning commission approve individual areas by resolution. In terms of the areas that would qualify here in the city of Palm, Palm Springs, doing a mapping exercise, we identified that there are three areas that would qualify based on distance, and I'll get into the economic criteria as we look at each of them. The first one that we're identifying as Area 1 is on the northwest end of the city. You can see the area shaded in blue here on the map is the area that is greater than one mile from an existing grocery store. And essentially that area covers the Old Las Palmas area, Vista Las Palmas, and then also Desert Highland Gateway and Little Tuscany areas. It swings back to the east. You can see that Maryland up there on the north end of the map is also included in that food desert area. This is one of the areas where a portion of it does qualify under the economic criteria. Obviously, not the Old Las Palmas area, but in the Desert Highland Gateway area, that does qualify for that particular census tract. Area 2 is on the northeast side of town centered around the intersection of Jean Autry and Vista Chino. It takes in portions of the Ascena neighborhood, El Rancho Vista Estates, and then dips down in the very southwest corner to include a portion of the Sunmore neighborhood. Uh, this has a portion of the census tract that qualifies under the economic criteria, but most of this area does not. One of the other, uh, unique issues about this area is there really aren't enough households in this area to merit designation as a food desert overlay, even though portions of it are greater than one mile from an existing grocery store. The third area that we identified is on the southwest side of the city and encompasses the Andreas Hills and the Mesa neighborhoods. Uh, these areas do not qualify under the economic criteria. Another, uh, issue with this particular area is there are no commercial zones in the shaded area. And so consequently, even if we were to adopt this as a food desert overlay, there isn't any location for a grocery store to locate here. So again, just reviewing, the, uh, neighborhood that's best suited for a food desert overlay is a portion of Area 1. And if you were to approve this ordinance, we would move forward with designating that particular area as a food desert. In terms of the proposed overlay, what we're proposing for the approval process is that applicants would only need to submit a single application and that would be a conditional use permit application. As you'll recall, one of the discussions that we had last month is either doing these via a major architectural application or a conditional use permit application. I believe the consensus was, is a conditional use permit application because it gives the opportunity for public notice, as that's required for a conditional use permit application, and then also allows the planning commission to attach conditions to the approval. As an incentive, what we're proposing is that there would be just a 60-day processing time for the application. And then also, the item would go directly to the planning commission, that there would be no architectural advisory committee review. The purpose in doing this is to reduce the timeframe. That's one of the things that applicants often mention to us in terms of, one of the incentives that they would like to see is a reduced timeframe for entitlement, and so that's why we're proposing this to you. One of the other things that we are proposing for any grocery store in a food desert area that goes into an existing building where all they are doing is renovating the building or perhaps a minor expansion, we're proposing that that would go through an administrative process only unless that particular application would result in expanding the building by more than 25% of the existing floor area, or if they were proposing an accessory use that would require a conditional use permit. In that case, then they would only do a conditional use permit like new construction. Other incentives that we're proposing are based on qualifying grocery stores, and we've defined that as a grocery store that has a minimum square footage of 5,000 square feet. And then one of the recommendations of our subcommittee is a maximum square footage of 40,000 square feet. In terms of the minimum square footage, this is something that comes from the Food Industry Association. That's typically seen as the minimum square footage necessary to carry a full line of dry groceries, canned goods, and perishables. In terms of the maximum size, the subcommittee felt that the incentives should not apply to the big box stores, that typically those developers of the big box grocery stores don't need the incentives that a smaller chain might, uh, find desirable in terms of locating a store in a defined food desert area. Other incentives in terms of the qualifying grocery stores is, again, we would waive the requirement for a major architectural application, so the applicants would only be required to file a single application, which would provide some savings in application fees. They would not have to file an additional or separate conditional use permit for any accessory uses, such as liquor or having an accessory gas station. In terms of accessory uses, I just want to point out that accessory use is defined in the zoning code. And so I think one of the questions was last month, what if it's largely a liquor store that happens to have food items? Would that qualify? And the answer is no, based on the city's definition of an accessory use. We would also propose minor modifications for the following development standards, up to 30% in terms of a reduction in parking requirements for a qualifying grocery store. We would reduce setbacks by up to 25% of the required setbacks. We would allow a height increase of up to 15% over what is permitted in the underlying zoning district. And then whenever there are separation distance waivers, uh, either in the C1 commercial zoning district or the M1 industrial zoning district, uh, those separation distances may be waived as long as certain buffering requirements and a minimum setback is maintained. As I had mentioned, the subcommittee discussed the proposed ordinance before bringing this forward to you this evening. They had a number of comments relative to the draft ordinance. One of the key things that they suggested is they wanted to see incentives for the reuse of existing buildings. And so as I had mentioned earlier in the presentation, existing buildings, as long as they don't expand beyond 25% of the existing footprint, would be an administrative process. Uh, they also wanted to waive the buffer requirements for the reuse of existing buildings, the thought being that because the building is there existing, there is no need for additional buffer between adjacent uses. Uh, and so, uh, again, they wouldn't be required to do those buffering requirements. And then the third thing, as I had mentioned earlier, the subcommittee felt it was important to put a cap on the qualifying stores in terms of the square footage, that the big box stores shouldn't be allowed to have the incentives that any stores under 40,000 square feet would be allowed. Uh, so that is the proposed ordinance. One of the things I want to point out is, Mr. Priest, our attorney, uh, reviewed the changes that we had made with the subcommittee. He has a number of, um, minor corrections to it and they aren't substantive changes to the ordinance. There was a portion in subsection E of the ordinance where I had duplicative language that we would take out. And then he also had some clarifying comments under section F for the approval process, but again, those aren't substantive changes. If you were to approve the ordinance this evening, we would incorporate those corrections as part of the ordinance going forward to the city council. That concludes my presentation. We do not have any members of the public who are registered to speak under this item, and so, um, you may open and quickly close the public comment for this item, and after that, I'll go ahead and take your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I will both open and close the public comment section on this, and it is before the commission. Are there comments? Who was, the subcommittee members were?
Were Commissioner Donenfeld, Song, and Irvin.
Commissioner Donenfeld. Thank you. Thank you for your work. Uh, comments? Commissioner Hirschfeld? You want to unmute?
Okay. Um, I have some questions for staff. Uh, uh, you mentioned there's a, a 60-day application, application period for a CUP. What happens in that 60 days? Is there a way to reduce that number?
What happens during that 60-day period is that upon determining that the application is complete, staff has 60 days to bring it forward to the planning commission. Uh, in that period, what we do is we circulate the application to other departments to get their comments. That's to the engineering, fire, and building departments. Uh, then we prepare our staff report. We prepare the public hearing notice. The property needs to be posted 30 days prior to the hearing of the planning commission. So those are all the things that happen within that 60-day period.
So that's a minimum for you? There's no way to cut that down?
There really isn't because of the public noticing requirements.
Right, okay. Um, you mentioned that, uh, one of the incentives, uh, under this proposed change is to reduce the number of applications to one. And what now, how many applications would, would a grocery store need to make now?
Typically, what they would need to make is both a major architectural application and then a conditional use permit for any accessory uses. So they would have to file two applications typically.
So it's just the major architectural that gets, um, waived?
That is correct.
Okay. And, um, a- as I mentioned on a call today, I'm having trouble, um, understanding exactly where this proposed district would be. Um, you, you mentioned the blue area, but then much of the blue area is going to be excluded. Is there a map that shows just the area that you would include in this ordinance?
Unfortunately, I don't, but if I could have our studio pull up the PowerPoint again, let me go in and see if I can explain that for you. Just a moment. So we would base it on the boundaries of the census tract essentially, and that is going to be what I have here in the circle, 446.05. And so the boundaries would be here along North Palm Canyon. Uh, they would come over here on Sunrise Parkway and then down Indian Canyon. Um, hopefully that helps to explain that area.
That includes that new Marisol development?
It, it would. It would be up to the planning commission to determine if they wanted to include that as part of the area or not. Um, we don't really have enough economic information on that area to determine whether or not it really qualifies to be included.
Correct. Okay, well, that, that clarifies the area for me. Are we doing comments now or just questions?
Uh, why don't we do questions first and then comments?
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions of staff? Uh, goodness, I've got two views on the screen. Let me see if I can. Thank you. Uh, I have one question for Flynn and it's on the backyard, the rear yard setback. Um, we have slightly different standards for C1 and M1. I know that the C1 of 25% reduction would be 15 feet. Uh, do you need more than 15 feet for the M1 or could they both be 15 feet?
They potentially could be both 15 feet. Um, I don't know that, uh, there's much of a difference in M1. I think the setback reduction would result in a setback. In M1, I think the setback reduction would result in a setback of about 18 to 19 feet. And that's close enough.
Okay. I think that's... My other question, and it's one I asked you earlier today, is if you have an existing building, but they want to put in a gas station or a liquor store, they'd still need to do a CUP?
That's correct. They still would need to file a conditional use permit application, but it would only be applicable to the accessory use.
And would they have to file for the accessory use as a major architectural?
No, they would not.
Because is that clear here that they wouldn't have to do that?
In the version that you have in front of you, I don't think it's as clear as it could be, but Mr. Priest has added language that does clarify that requirement. So, he does have that in there.
Perfect. I think that is my questions. Are there any other questions? Commissioner Marutse, you need to unmute. Would other people mute when somebody else is talking so that we don't get an X?
I have a question for the director. Are there any buildings within this zone that are being targeted that seem obvious for a market use, the food market?
I don't know that there are any that would seem obvious in the particular area on the north end of town. There are some industrial buildings there that may lend themselves to a market, but they're not currently set up in that way. So, there's no existing building that used to be a market, for example, and no longer is, that I'm aware of.
The 7-Eleven that we recently did not approve, is that parcel within this zone?
Yes, it would be within this zone.
Okay. So, there is an opportunity, since there once was a supermarket there, correct?
That is correct, yes.
And it was demolished for a potential project of some sort?
To be quite honest, I don't know the reason that the store was demolished.
All right. So, we'd have to rebuild, obviously, from scratch. All right. Thank you.
Correct.
Any other questions, the staff? This item is now before the commission. Are there any comments, or should we just take a motion? Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My comment is just to really compliment the subcommittee and the staff. This is probably the fastest policy document I've ever seen done by the city, and I think it's really well done. And I thank everybody for their effort during a difficult time, and I'll be supporting it provided there's no modifications by the commission.
Commissioner Donenfeld?
I support it wholeheartedly. I just think that the subcommittee shouldn't take all the credit here. When we were given the document, it was very well crafted by our planning director. And as you could see, we were very much positively disposed towards it and made very few changes, actually. And so, having been on the subcommittee and pleased with the product, I would move to approve the staff report on this.
I'll second it. Can I... Commissioner Song can second it. I have a question as to whether you would accept the change to 15 feet for the M1 zone?
Yes, yes. Yes, I would.
And you would as well, Commissioner Song. So, are there any more comments before we call the roll? Commissioner Irvin?
Yeah. Doug, I would like to mention, it probably wasn't as easy as it seemed. There was a lot of work with the business retention plan as well, putting together the, getting it started, moving. And so, I think Flynn just kind of picked up and took off from the business retention subcommittee that was put together.
Well, I thank them as well because they laid some good groundwork for it.
Roll call, please, and then just congratulations to everybody who worked on this.
Okay. Commissioner Donenfeld?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Hirschbein?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewin?
Yes.
Commissioner Song?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Marutse?
Yes.
And Chair Rehmuck?
Yes, with pleasure.
Good. Okay.
And this passes unanimously. We have no unfinished business. We have no new business. We have a Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments.
Madam Chair, before we begin the reports, requests, and comments, Mr. Newell has a brief presentation with an update on the general plan process. If you wouldn't mind, we'll go ahead and begin now.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. I missed that.
Yes. So, Madam Chair and Commissioners, what we want to do is just give you a brief update on the limited update that we are doing and the process we're going through right now with the 2007 general plan. As you'll recall in previous updates to the commission, we have been moving forward with this process. We've had a public workshop back in February for the project, and since that time, we had two surveys that have closed. The second survey just closed on May 28. And what we were looking for in this survey was additional clarification and feedback from some of the comments that we had heard back at the community workshop in February. So, specifically, the survey asked questions relating to land use, circulation, and housing. So, these are the three kind of chapters that we are focusing on with the update to the general plan. Of course, there are some other limited updates that we are doing as part of this process to other elements, but the three that we kind of focused on with this second survey were the three that are the primary focus of the update. It did allow participants to participate in a mapping exercise involving identification of assets and opportunities for improvement throughout the city. So, we wanted to see what the community thought was something of value and what something, and as well as areas that would be, could be done or could be improved for one reason or another. So, we did get a number of comments on that map. We are still going through the results of the survey. As I said, it was open from May 14, and it closed on May 28. The good news is we had over 400 people complete the survey. So, there was probably about 430 or so responses that we got with the survey. So, that's more than the first survey that we had, which was roughly 330. So, we did get some more participation. And as far as the kind of spectrum of participants, we did get responses from most of the neighborhood organizations, residents, or people living within the neighborhood organizations. I think there was maybe three or so that were not represented in responses or participants in the survey. So, we are, as I said, we are still going through some of that, the results of the survey. And so, that information will be, of course, presented to the steering committee. And so, the steering committee had their second meeting last night, and it was a virtual meeting similar to this. And we did get, what we did at the meeting last night was we provided an overview of the feedback that we had gotten from the community workshop, as well as survey number one, which, if you'll recall, that was specifically focused on the priorities and the visions, the priority and the vision statements in our general plan. So, kind of the overarching vision for the city in 20 years. So, we discussed revisions to the vision statement last night at the steering committee. We made some good groundwork on that, and we are kind of fine-tuning that statement based on the comments and feedback that we had gotten. And then, we also started to delve into some of the priority statements. So, those are the 10 priority statements that are in the general plan, and looking at possible revisions to those statements. We did establish a subcommittee to review the priorities, the priority statements, in advance of our next steering committee meeting. And so, we are going to be scheduling that here shortly. And basically, what we're going to do is kind of get some, based on the feedback that we have been getting from public comments or the public on the surveys, and then just their own feedback for items related to the vision statements that they've been hearing, maybe possibly in the community, things that are important for the next 20 years. So, that's kind of the next steps for the steering committee. We, once we have a recommendation from the steering committee, we will bring that to the Planning Commission for both the vision and the priority statements. And those would be given to you for review, and then ultimately to city council to review as well. So, that would be the next, what we anticipate is we expect to have our next general plan steering committee probably later in July. And then, we would bring, once we have a final recommendation from them on the vision and priorities, we'd bring that to you probably in September after the August break. And so, lastly, I just want to reiterate that, you know, of course, we are maintaining the general plan website and providing updates on this platform for any member of the public who might be watching the Planning Commission meeting from home. So, we encourage people to visit psgeneralplan.com. It does have a great wealth of information about the process and about meetings that we've been having, the public workshops, future meetings, things of that nature. So, we, of course, encourage people to visit the website to stay most up to date on this process. So, with that, I'll conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Just to say that the last meeting was, will be on that website. It's sometime soon, and it's on YouTube if anyone wants to watch it. Are there any questions of staff or of me regarding that meeting? Commissioner Donenfeld?
My question is, and maybe of a Flynn, too, the budget constraints that we're going to be living with in the city, how will that affect, if at all, funding of this first phase of the study?
Mr. Donenfeld, at this point, we don't have any impact to the budget for the general plan update. One of the things that has helped us is through Mr. Newell's efforts, we recently received a $160,000 grant from the state to assist us in updating our housing element. So, that has helped us in keeping this project going, and we appreciate the fact that the city council has not canceled the project due to our current fiscal issues here at the city.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yeah. So, do we plan on having any more workshops? I know that some of the workshops came to some of the neighborhoods and were pretty effective. And I think some of the neighborhoods were looking forward to the follow-up. And I just hope that we have a little bit more discussion and, you know, kind of talking a little bit more about the general plan going forward.
Commissioner Irvin, absolutely. Unfortunately, the pandemic has made it a little bit difficult for us to do outreach to the neighborhoods. But hopefully, soon, we'll be able to go out and do in-person meetings again, and has been our plan. We want to go out and do presentations, especially to those neighborhoods that don't have the opportunity to participate at the citywide meetings, and we've identified a number of those. We did hold one up at Desert Island Gateway, I think, back in early March before we had the social distancing issues. But we need to go back up to that neighborhood again and follow up with them. So, yes, that is our intent, and we'll do that once we can meet in person again.
Maybe a Zoom would work.
That's certainly something we could consider.
The Zooming was really excellent last night. We even broke into small groups, and we were able to do a Zoom meeting and have small group discussions and then come back. And it was orderly and effective. Planning Commission, we'll move on to Planning Commission reports, requests, and comments. I have one. I just wanted to wish Joanne a happy 50th wedding anniversary, if she's still here with us.
Thank you, Kathy. It was, thank you. That's a long time to be with my man.
Just for the benefit of the public, this was a very short Planning Commission agenda. Is there some, is there something behind this? I'm just curious. Should, I'd like to know why it's so abbreviated.
As you can imagine, with the closure of City Hall to members of the public, with the closure of certain industries for a period of time relative to the pandemic, what we are seeing is that the number of applications that are submitted to our department have dropped off. And so, consequently, this agenda, and I anticipate that your July agenda, will be relatively short. We are going to go ahead and take our monthly break in August, as we typically do. And so, we're looking forward to the month of September, and hopefully, the number of applications will increase by then.
What about applications that were in process?
Applications that were in process are coming forward to you shortly. We do have a couple of them that are going through environmental review, but I don't know that they'll be ready in time for the July agenda.
Don't we have a June 24 Planning Commission?
We typically would have a June 24 meeting, but under our pandemic, we are only holding one meeting per month right now.
Oh, okay. So, I'll scratch that one off. All right. It's just unfortunate, obviously, that so little is coming forward, because certainly, we need more growth, and there you go.
Commissioner Lewin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight's discussion about the condition of the cell towers and palm fronds made me remember a question that's been on my mind for a long time, and I hope the director can, if he can't answer it today, would come back at a future meeting. The question is, who's responsible for maintaining the upkeep on Mexican, you know, faux palm tree cell towers? Is it, are they inspected from time to time? Is the property owner or the cell tower manufacturer required to maintain these and replace palm fronds when they blow off? I'm just curious about the process with the city.
Certainly. The applicant is responsible for maintaining the cell tower, and where they do have a monopalm, they are required to maintain those fronds. In terms of enforcement, our code enforcement can go out and do enforcement actions. Unfortunately, we don't do a regular inspection like on an annual basis. We just don't have the personnel to do that. However, the Planning Commission has noted before that we would like to identify those that aren't being as maintained as well as they should be. And so, perhaps during our August break, that's something that we can concentrate, is looking at the existing monopalms and referring any of those that are missing fronds to code enforcement. So, there is a process that we can use. It's just, again, we've lacked the personnel to do that.
But if a citizen, just as a follow-up, if the citizen used that wonderful app that you have on your cell phone, the pumps rings at your service and said, hey, this cell tower looks pretty shabby, it would be dealt with?
Absolutely. Citizens can call into code enforcement and identify those.
Thank you very much. That was my only question.
Any other questions or comments?
Commissioner Song?
Director Flynn, do you plan to update as far as the time of the Planning Commission if it's considered to be changed from evening back to afternoon time?
At this point in the council discussions, they are going to leave the board and commission meetings in the evenings as they are currently. They had asked the question, would there be a significant budget savings in terms of overtime for city staff if those meetings were moved back to the daytime hours? But unfortunately, they have not pursued that discussion any further, and so the intent is to leave the meetings in the evening as they are currently. And so the intent is to leave the meetings in the evening as they are currently.
The planning directors' report.
Madam Chair, just in terms of our future meetings. Oh, I'm sorry. Madam Chair, apparently, there was another question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Irvin?
Yes. I just kind of wanted to just more of a, maybe make a statement or a comment. It's kind of a bittersweet thing that's going on here in our country. And, you know, dealing with COVID-19 and coming out of COVID-19, it looks like we have a little bit of glimpse of hope that things will get a little bit better. But I just kind of want to speak a little bit about George Floyd and kind of the incidents and things that are going on in the United States. Our Coachella Valley is a little bit different than a lot of the states and countries here in the United States. The Coachella Valley has been throwing quite a bit of good peaceful protest, getting mixed reviews from mixed people, making sure that there's no violence or any destruction or destroying our properties here in the Coachella Valley. And I just kind of want to echo that. In Palm Springs, we had over a couple hundred people there at the, at the Roof Hardy Park over the weekend on Saturday. Great turnout. It was put on by five young women. They were in high school. And the turnout was very well, very thoughtful. And I just wanted to let everyone know that we will make it as a country and everything will be fine because our youth is working together to make this a better place.
It was a very impressive event. I was there on the sidelines because of COVID, but I attended, and it was, I think there were about 1,000 people. It was amazing and wonderful to see young people organizing it. Does anyone else want to comment on this topic? I hope that this is a turning point in the country and that we end up acknowledging that black lives matter and that we improve the race relations in this country. There certainly is the energy and the goodwill to get it done. On a different note, I just wanted to ask staff if they would make sure that all of the commissioners got full names as the top row, I think, only has first names and the bottom row has full names. And it can be put into Zoom. It would be good to, to have consistency on how our names are shown. Planning directors' report.
Madam Chair, thank you. Just in terms of our future meeting schedule, our next meeting will be on Wednesday, July the 8. We will not be having the second meeting in June, nor will we be having the second meeting in July. So we just have one meeting in July on July the 8. We anticipate going dark during the month of August unless there is direction from city council otherwise. So that is our immediate meeting schedule. And then just a final thing. I would just like to say thank you to Commissioner Irvin for your words of hope. So thank you.
At this point, I will adjourn the meeting in honor of the five young women who organized the protest on Saturday and the young people across the country who've been in the streets to honor George Floyd and work for better human and race relations in this country. Thank you.